Good evening, and welcome to the March 2016 meeting of the Town of Kent Planning Board. Please join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda tonight was an executive session, which we just completed before the meeting, and it was to consider applicants to fill a vacant position on the planning board. And we closed that executive session just before we came out here. Next item on the agenda tonight is to approve the planning board minutes from February 2016. Could I have a motion to approve? And then we'll open for discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Anybody have any changes or alterations, corrections to the minutes from February 2016?
I didn't find anything.
Okay. Being none, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor of approval? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is Von Rosenvinge? Vinge? Property? It's an erosion control plan for an in-ground swimming pool. I know there's no one here from the applicant tonight, and this is going to carry over to April, but I would ask Neil, if you would, if you would just give us a rundown on... No? Bruce? Sorry. Okay, Bruce. Bruce, you're... Just give us a rundown. This was kind of complicated, so I'd like to...
Run it.
Yeah, run past it. And the ultimate goal we're at here is to find out whether or not we should move this below the line for administrative, whether or not we need a public hearing. Those things that we discussed at the workshop, so...
Correct. Good evening, Bruce Barber, Town Environmental Consultant. This is an application before the board for an erosion semi-control permit. The applicant got started a bit in advance of obtaining their permit. The question before the board, as you may recall from the workshop, is that access to the proposed pool construction, which is the part of the building permit that the building inspector will review, was on an adjoining or neighboring property. The applicant has indicated in their erosion semi-control application that their desire is, once the pool construction is completed, to restore that back with trees and shrubs that have not really developed a complete landscaping plan for that process. Basically, this is two parts, in that there is a violation to correct through restoring that access area, making sure that the site is stabilized. And then, second to that, of course, would be obtaining a building permit for the pool and associated equipment construction. And so that's what's before the board. The applicant has provided a sketch to date, but no formal erosion semi-control plan, to my knowledge. This typically would be handled administratively. The complicating factor, of course, is that a small section of the access driveway to the pool construction is on an adjoining property itself.
Okay. Thank you, Bruce. Now, we talked at the workshop that, given that specifically, it's not unusual for us to waive the public hearing requirement on applications like this, but because there's already encroachment onto a neighboring property, we thought it probably made sense not to waive the public hearing requirement on this. I'm wondering if you're in agreement with that.
That's correct. I think, you know, the board's decision to allow the public to come in and express their concerns to the board is appropriate in this instance.
Okay. Great. All right, so this will be on for April. And does anybody have, while we're here, anybody have any questions for Bruce regarding this one?
I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you, Bruce. Next item on the agenda is Patterson Crossing. This is for an amended site plan review.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. I'm Jeff Contelmo from Insight Engineering.
I'm sorry? Hang on one second. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Our board member, Charlie Sisto, is recusing himself on this item, but he's going to stay at the desk. Sorry, go ahead.
Hi, Jeff Contelmo from Insight Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture from here in Carmel, representing Patterson Crossing. As the board is aware, we're seeking amended site plan approval and related permits for two sets of general changes to the Kent portion of the project. As we've discussed with the board, the two changes include the lessening of the road grade on the entry drive from approximately 8% to approximately 7%, and then the related drainage and grading work associated with that. The second amendment is for the stormwater improvements along the western portion of the property, which are being sought to be undertaken by the East of Hudson Watershed Corporation in an effort to eliminate the stormwater runoff, which, right now, comes off of the Lake Carmel development area, comes through the subject property, has created a tremendous eroded ditch, and continues to discharge untreated runoff into the middle branch of the Groton River and northern cove of Lake Carmel. And I know the board is very aware of those improvements. Based on our last appearance before the board, we've supplemented our design drawings and pertinent documents with some remaining information that we had promised the board that we didn't get to with our last submission, so that's been completed and submitted to the board. In addition, we've procured and submitted a copy of a DEP, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan Approval, for the improvements associated with the East of Hudson project. We've also provided the board with an unexecuted copy of the maintenance agreement, which has been developed for the project as part of the three-party agreement between the towns of Kent and Patterson and the applicant. We've also provided documentation and follow-up from East of Hudson Watershed Corporation confirming the fact that the improvements that are being funded and undertaken in concert between East of Hudson and Patterson Crossing will, in fact, be maintained and be the responsibility of Patterson Crossing. In addition, we saw the 239M and referral from the Putnam County Department of Planning come through with no objection, and we also had received a copy of Julie's comment noting there was a drainage oversight on our part, and we thank her for picking that up and showed how a slight adjustment on our part can address that. So we believe we've attended to all of the open items and are interested to hear, you know, where we stand with the board.
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody on the board have questions for Mr. Contelmo?
Yeah, I do. Jeff, in the change of the grade on this road, you're lengthening the road, right?
The road alignment does change slightly and does lengthen slightly, yes.
I thought I read in your plan you're lengthening it 100 feet.
I would say approximately 100 feet, yes.
So how is it that an architect like yourself misjudged this by 100 feet? And how do we know you haven't misjudged it by another 100 feet?
Well, first of all, I'm not an architect, I'm an engineer, but...
Or your firm.
My firm. We didn't misjudge it. I'm not sure where that perception comes from.
Well, you're changing it. So you made a plan for us that we accepted, and now you're changing that plan, as if you didn't know what you were doing then.
I don't think that's a fair assessment, that we didn't know what we're doing. But basically, what we do is, we're approached by land developer, homeowner, property owner who wants to pursue a certain type of improvement. In this case, it's a fairly significant improvement. And they come to us, and they lay out what they would like to achieve, and we work with them to get a design that they feel comfortable with and that they proceed with. The design that we prepared on behalf of the applicant and presented to the board and was ultimately approved by the board includes a lot of different design elements. The design element of the grade was initially established based on consultation with the applicant and discussions with his other consultants, and they felt...
But if you have architects who work for you, they should have been able to see that the grade was too steep.
I think you're misunderstanding what's happening, and I'd like to finish my explanation. Again, I don't have architects that work for me. We are civil engineers, surveyors, and landscape architects. Okay? And we designed the road to 8% based on a limitation of what, at the time, the applicant and his consultants felt was a reasonable grade for the roadway. As the project has progressed and the applicant has talked to many of the end-users, has enlisted other consultants, the applicant decided that they would be better served and the broader public would be better served by lessening the grade of the roadway. That was the decision the applicant made. We were directed to effect that change, and that's what you see on these drawings. This isn't us coming back saying, "Excuse me, planning board, we're so sorry, we made a mistake, and we want to correct it."
Well, how do we know that the applicant isn't going to come back to you and say, "Oh, now we wanted even less of a grade"?
You know, what we have before you now is what the applicant has asked us to submit. He assigned the application...
And if he comes back to you in a half a year and says, "Well, let's do it this way instead," you're going to say, "No, we can't, because the planning board said no"?
I can't say that. I would have to say to him that there was one board member in particular who felt as if we shouldn't be able to come back and amend our site plan. I think the amended site plan process, which is recognized by your code, is one that every town has incorporated in their code, recognizing that projects do require change and do require modification based on many factors that affect it. If you feel slighted that there was an 8% grade originally, and now there's a proposal for a 7%?
It's not about me, and it's not about being slighted. It's about the environment of the area.
Okay.
That's what it's about.
And we've taken that into consideration with the new design.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for Jeff? If not, we have, I know we have two short, relatively short, engineering and environmental memos. Did you get those already?
Yes, we did. Thank you.
Okay. Bruce and Julie, would you like to go over them quickly?
I'd just like to start by thanking Julie also. That was excellent work that you did on catching the problem with the water and the riprap and not having the final location of that. Thank you very much for catching that. I really appreciate your time and efforts on that.
You're welcome. So that was my only comment, was the swell didn't have an end structure. I received an email from Jeff Contelmo where they've added it back in, so that should take care of my concerns. That was it.
Okay. And I noticed your first comment is that the revisions to the phasing plant to address the ongoing erosion problem on the slope in the Town of Kent early in a project is a benefit for Kent.
Yes. Yep, I wanted to point that out, that adjusting the phase enough to do that earlier...
And I think that was a general feeling of the board, too, that getting this issue is a glaring issue.
Getting that part done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce?
At the workshop, the board will recall, I expressed some questions with respect to the future maintenance, once the retrofit was installed on the drainage area on the property. And Jeff was kind enough to send along the agreement, that's a three-party agreement, between Town of Patterson, Town of Kent, and East of Hudson, which details how the maintenance will be addressed by the owner. It is, as Jeff just indicated, unexecuted, but Neil has incorporated that as a condition of future approval within the resolution, so that has been addressed. The DEP also, yesterday, approved this retrofit as part of the East of Hudson program, and so the approval that we were looking for has been obtained. And also, as indicated, there's been some modifications over minor to the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, as well as the phosphorus calculations, which Julie has already addressed. I also want to echo that the board will recall, I've been very emphatic about making sure, as you have, that this improvement, all through the planning process, was executed, and it is fortuitous that was removed from very far down the line in the construction process to something that'll be happening this year, which will result in a lot less pollutant loading into Lake Carmel, as well as the associated water courses.
Thank you, Bruce. Neil, you want to come up and run us through the resolution you have prepared and walk us through procedural issues?
Neil Wilson, Town Planner. Actually, before I begin, I would just like to say it's very nice to have Julie back from her maternity leave.
Couldn't agree more.
Yeah, it's wonderful. Bill Rhodey is a wonderful guy and great to work with, but it's...
I want to be the only old guy around here.
But it's especially gratifying to have her back. I had circulated around a draft resolution this morning, which grants all of the, well, it's basically, it's amended site plan, steep slope, and freshwater wetland permit approvals. The recitation is to the proposed plan change, which, in terms of the improvements, includes the driveway, as we've just discussed, the reduction in the grade. But also, this plan incorporates the East of Hudson work in the eroded gully, which is kind of really the big bang for the buck as far as the erosion, the amended plan itself. You may recall that when the board went through the site plan review and prepared its finding statements, going all the way back to 2010, I mean, here we are six years later, still working on this, there was a tension, if you will, as the board worked to get the final project plans to incorporate the improvements to the gully. And those are on that original set of drawings. The problem, from the town's standpoint, is the phasing of that work was going to occur much, much later in the project. As a result of the involvement of East of Hudson Corporation, that work is now being brought forward much earlier into this very first phase. In fact, the project plans show the plans that the East of Hudson Corporation would implement. I understand from Jeff that the work has actually been put out to bid. I don't think they've actually selected somebody to do the work, but they're prepared to pull the trigger. So I would expect that we will probably see things happening fairly quickly over the next couple of weeks and months to finalize these plans, get the agreements with the applicant signed, get the escrows and the performance monies posted, because East of Hudson won't start that work until the town has signed off on this drawing. So, and I'll let Jeff speak further to that if he wishes. So what you have in front of you is a draft, excuse me, resolution that grants the amended approvals. Many of the recitations are similar to the original 2010, excuse me, site plan resolution. There really isn't a lot of changes. I don't know if anybody has had a chance to really go through it. I'm happy to, but it looks an awful lot like the prior resolutions.
Well, why don't I open it up to questions from the board? Anybody have questions, specific issues in the resolution, any items that they'd like Neil to expand on or talk about?
Okay. Bill thought it was close to the 6. Okay.
6.99.
Okay. Jeff just pointed something out. In the, on the very first page, the fourth whereas, I do have the discussion that the driveway access slope is going from 8% to approximately 6%, and that was based, the 6% was based on my conversation with Bill Rhodey. Jeff is saying it's 6.9. Might as well be a 7. So let's make the correction now, just get it right.
Okay. Okay, so procedurally, then, we need to first vote on waiving public hearing, correct?
Yeah, this resolution actually includes a waiver as part of your findings.
So it's all incorporated?
It's really all incorporated in here. Just trying to find it very quickly. Yeah, if you look in the middle of page two, it's the 1, 2, 3, 4, the fifth whereas down in the middle of the page is the waiver of the public hearing on the permits, on the basis that the project is largely the same, is that previously approved, and that the changes themselves do not raise any additional environmental issues. I would also point out, if you flip to page five, there is a recitation that the board affirms the September 9, 2010 finding statement. In other words, we're not reopening the board's seeker review. So, yeah, get back to your question. So the waiver is already sort of built into this.
So it's a consolidated...
Consolidated, yeah. That way, we don't have those types of determinies sort of floating in the record. They're all consolidated here in one written.
Very good.
So the recommendation that would be to, unless the board has further changes, to vote on the resolution as presented. The four votes will be needed to carry it, recognizing that we're short some members. And it does call for a roll call vote as well at the end.
Correct. All right. Anybody have any other questions for Neil? If not, I will ask for a motion to adopt a Town of Kent Planning Board Resolution of Amended Site Plan, Amended Steep Slope and Erosion Control Permit, and Amended Fresh Water Wetland Permit Approvals on the Matter of Patterson Crossing Retail Development, Town of Kent, Town of Patterson.
I make the motion.
George, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
George, Janice. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. I vote yes. Janice?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Charlie is recused. Dennis?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next item on the agenda is Bottlegate Farm Requesting for Reduction of Erosion Control Do we have anyone here for Bottlegate? Oh, you're here? Okay.
Good evening, Jeff Contelmo again, representing Bottlegate Farm. Fred Adams, the owner. As the board's aware, Bottlegate Farm was approved some time ago. There was $19,000 and change put up as part of security for erosion control bond for the project. Fred Adams, the owner, who I know was a recognized local excavator and landowner and property owner, you know, has affected a bunch of the work that was associated with the site plan. In particular, the biggest part of the project was the construction of a fairly significant stormwater basin. That work was completed quite some time ago. It has all been stabilized, it's fully vegetated, it's planted. So what Fred is seeking is not a full return of his bond, but a reduction of the bond. And the request seeks to reduce the bond from $19,000 and change. Do I believe it is $5,775, so almost $6,000. Again, based on the work that's been completed and the minimal work that remains, we feel that's adequate surety for erosion control purposes, and would request the board to permit that reduction for the town board to consider. They ultimately would reduce the bond.
Thank you. Anyone have questions for Mr. Contelmo? Okay, I know we have a memo from Bruce on this. Just the one memo on this, right?
The planning board's most recent approval on this is dated January 10, 2013, and in that approval, there's a condition indicating that prior to completion of all the work and prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy of any kind, both a certification, engineering certification, as well as an ASBelt survey, must be provided to the board in order to document that the work was done in compliance with your approved plans. I spoke with John Watson this morning, I also talked to Bill Rhodey. The certification in the ASBelt, which is condition number eight in that document, has not been fulfilled. The recommendation to the board is that the board hold in abeyance a decision on reducing the bond until such time as it can be documented that the improvements in question, those that have been completed, indeed, were done in compliance with your approved plan. I had an opportunity to look at the site today, along with Bill Walters. The stormwater basin is certainly in place. There was some evidence in the concrete structure area of some rills, and there was some rip rap there that looked like it had fallen in, but short of that, everything appeared to be very stable on the site. It's just that we don't have documentation, as required in the resolution, that everything has been installed in accordance with your plan. So our recommendation was to hold in abeyance until we get those documents.
Okay. And did Mr. Walter indicate that those documentation would be forthcoming?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes, you know, John did speak with Bruce this morning. I spoke to John, and John spoke to Fred. That's a long list of talk. Fred has no problem with the ASBelt. As a matter of fact, he's commissioned our firm to go ahead and complete that as soon as possible. My only request is this: the ASBelt requirement is one for a CO. I understand that, you know, what we're asking for is very different than a CO, and I understand the relevance of making sure that the stormwater basin was constructed to the appropriate size. What I would ask is that the board consider the reduction conditioned on our submission of the survey and certification and confirmation of that work, so that we don't have to come back for a meeting, and if everything is met and we've done our, he's done his work properly, and we submit the correct info reviewed by your consultants, we can then approach the town board for the reduction of the bond. And again, I'll point out that the ASBelt condition in the resolution has to do with getting a CO, not getting a bond reduced, and we would just appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Could I get your input on that suggestion, Bruce?
Sure. I think that the certificate of occupancy was understood to be at the time of total completion of the project. The build-out, or the remaining build-out of the project, may or may not ever occur.
Correct.
So I think that what the board may consider is, whatever the applicant is construing as being completed, should be documented with the certification in the ASBelt. That being said, as I indicated, it appeared that the majority of the site was very stable, grass was growing. I believe there's only a few remaining items that John conveyed to me that really need to be done. Number one, the construction of the building on the remaining foundation of the old barn has not been done, and the associated grading, of course, behind that building has not been completed. The septic system associated with that building has not been installed, and the access on horsebound, which has been constructed, may not, in the final analysis, be constructed as was done at the request of a certain prospective tenant or owner. That being said, there's a few items left that could be stabilized in the stormwater basin that I saw. I think Jeff's suggestion is a reasonable one, in a sense that there does not appear to be more erosion issues than what the remaining bond would be needing to cover, based upon the site inspection, and upon receipt of the ASBelt and the certification, I feel that would be satisfactory.
So we could do a conditional recommendation to the town board that the bond be reduced upon certification from you, that the documentation requested has been received?
Yeah, I also would include that the town engineer as well, just to make sure...
Town engineer as well.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. So anybody on the board have any questions for Bruce or for the applicant on this? If not, I'll ask that, Julie, do you have anything to add on this? Are you good with what?
Yep. Okay. So I'll ask for a motion to recommend to the town board that the bond on a Bottlegate Farm application be reduced from $19,700 to $5,775, conditioned on the reception of the requested documentation, as outlined in Bruce Barber's comments, and a review and approval by the environmental consultant and the town engineer.
I'll make all of that motion.
Thank you. Phil, can I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is Putnam Stone.
Donald Flood, Putnam Stone. Good evening, Donald Flood, Putnam Stone. We're here to ask permission for grinding wood products and crushing stone.
Okay.
I have a letter here from Charles Martivano that might clear up something for you as far as the grinding of the organic material.
We can share.
Yeah, did it have our consultants?
Not all of us can read.
Did the consultants have this?
If you read the last sentence, according to this, the DEC has nothing to do with the grinding.
So, is this have to do with the issue we were discussing about, like, bugs in wood?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, so that's apparently not an issue.
Correct.
Let's see, Bruce, what we got? All right, so we have memos from Bruce and Julie, correct? So, why don't you, one of you come up and get us started? I'd like to state for the record that this is, Mr. Flood and his partners have recently taken possession of this property, Putnam Stone, on Route 52, which has been an ongoing source of problems for this board and the town in general. Previous ownership was operating there for many, many years with no approved site plan. Lot of violations, and our building inspector, Bill Walters, and this board, zoning board, town board have all been working for years to try and get these issues addressed, and Mr. Flood approached the planning board last month and presented a plan that we hope is finally going to do that, and we're anxious to be able to work with him and move this forward. All yours.
I prepared a memo. I went through the erosion control requirements. The drawing that they provided provides most of the required information. One of the items that needs to be provided is a maintenance schedule for the erosion control measures, which should be fairly easy because it's just silt fence, just that, you know, if there's holes in it and that sort of thing, it needs to be replaced, and if there's sediment up against it, it needs to be cleaned out. And then I have a comment about DEC and the processing of the stockpiles, which I think the email that was just provided may have addressed. I'm not sure about the rock crushing part, though. That still needs DEC approval, but if that requires DEC permit, then that'll have to be incorporated into the Town of Kent approvals. And then the standard note that after installation of the erosion control measures, you have to submit a letter to the building inspector. I've also asked for additional notes on the drawing to make it clear that the notations on the drawing are done by the owner of the property, not the original surveyor, and any sediment tracked on the paved surfaces will be cleared. Also, to move the project along, I came up with a bond estimate based upon scaling the amount of silt fence off of the drawing. So, I came up with 500 feet of silt fence. I don't know if that seems reasonable. So, that works out to be $2,000 for the erosion control estimate. So, if that is acceptable, then I would recommend that be accepted and forwarded to the town board for approval, and defer to Bruce Barber on any wetland issues.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Anyone have any questions for Julie?
Did you get a copy of my memo?
Bruce, would you like to come up and go over your memo?
I prepared a memo basically which memorialized a discussion that was at the last week's workshop and also the presentation given by Mr. Flood. Basically, Mr. Flood had indicated that the DEC had indicated that additional testing, soil testing, or sampling of the one stockpile that had some construction debris, et cetera, you may recall, is not required. We're just asking that that be provided in a written correspondence to the board. I believe there still is, after all this time, a current DEC wetland permit, but that should be provided as well. This is not a jurisdictional Town of Kent wetland. It is DEC wetlands, and so therefore, we do not have jurisdiction over any permitting with respect to the activity on site. The question with respect to the organic material, the wood, et cetera, is not so much of a grinding activity on site, but Janice had brought up the point, as had Phil, with regards to the actual transport of the materials and how that may or may not impact the Emerald Ash Borer. I contacted the folks at DEC. The Forest Health Division is the group that is in charge of addressing that. They have set regulations and also identified quarantine zones in which these materials, unless they're greater than one inch in size, that's the dimension that is, one inch in size is greater, requires some regulation if it's going to be going to these quarantined areas. Quarantine areas basically are in the Catskills and up around Albany, with the exception of the Town of Cortlandt for some reason, and so basically, I suspect that you're not transporting those materials to those areas, and that'll just be a condition of approval moving on. So, that addresses, I think.
Should we ask him to grind it to smaller pieces?
I don't think that. You can have one or both, Phil, so long as you are not transporting the materials to these quarantined areas, as shown on the map of the Forest Health Group at DEC, then you're able to do it.
If he ground it smaller, then it wouldn't matter, right?
Then it becomes a moot point. It is not subject to that regulation. So, I don't want to dictate one inch or smaller if you feel you're not going to be doing that. If you are, that's fine, but if you're not, we're just going to ask that it be documented that it's not going to be transported to those quarantined areas. And thank you for that suggestion.
Good, thank you.
The board also discussed the location of the rock crushing operation, and it was felt that if it was done towards more of the center of the site, there'd be less of a noise issue, and we're just asking that the applicant provide, as part of their sketch, the location of the rock crusher pursuant to the board's direction, as well as any stockpile material, because the board will recall that although it's desired by the applicant to remove all the organic materials, the rock material may stay on site for future work that's done for some of the parking locations. And so, if there is a stockpile, that should be shown on the plans, and then that's basically it. We defer to Julie with respect to erosion sediment control.
Thank you, Bruce. Anybody else have any other questions for Bruce? No. Okay. So, there's an issue here, again, with the noise, as was discussed at the workshop. We know that there's been problems over the years with some unauthorized crushing activity that took place on there, and it got a lot of reaction from the neighbors. People came in and were complaining, and I think there were citations issued. So, this is going to be a temporary situation. The rock crushing is going to be done as part of the remediation program to correct the violations that exist on the site. It's going to be a temporary situation. The question we have to answer is how, we need to inform nearby property owners that this is going to be happening. What's the best vehicle to do that? Is it a public hearing? It is a public hearing. Okay. So, our resolution is going to have to include a public hearing.
To set up a public hearing.
You understand that, Mr. Flood?
Yes, as far as the rock crushing, we may not do the rock crushing. We're not 100% sure that we're going to do the rock crushing at this point. We may end up hauling all the rock and material off the site.
Okay, that's an interesting recall.
And on the wood processing, I think they're going to process, I'm not doing the processing, Hickory Holmes is, and I think they're going to process it twice. They're going to try and get it down smaller than one inch.
Oh, very good.
Yeah, they're going to, because I think they're going to make mulch.
Very good.
And mulch will be like three eighths.
Thanks for the mulch.
Whether they pursue the rock crushing or not, that's a business decision, but I mean, the application before you anticipates that that would occur.
Right.
It's an erosion control plan at the end of the day, and the idea here is to facilitate the new owner in getting that material processed, if that's what he chooses to do, at least in terms of the rock, and moved offsite as quickly as possible.
Right.
The grinding and the crushing activities, assuming that does occur, it's short term. We're talking a matter of weeks. That being said, I don't live next to the site. It's easy to say that, but I think that it's important to notify the neighbors through our normal public hearing process.
Okay.
Otherwise, we don't really have any way of assuring that we've, we have properly notified people that this is going to occur. So, a public hearing on notice, like we normally do, is the way to do it.
Okay, so, in order to hold a public hearing at our next meeting, how soon would he have to get the notifications out to adjacent property owners?
Yeah, it's a, there's a 10-day mailing as well as a notice, Vera can fill you in on everything that needs to happen.
Okay.
In terms of the mailings and what have you, but it's on 10-day notice before the date of the hearing, not including the date of the hearing.
Okay, so, should we adopt a resolution to hold a public hearing on this application tonight?
Yes, I would recommend you do that.
Okay, and that would be the only action we can actually take tonight.
That's all you're doing tonight, right? It's just setting a public hearing.
Very good.
What would the earliest be to have a public hearing?
It would be at our next meeting.
Yeah, the, whatever. What's the meeting date?
I have it here. It's April 22nd.
No, it's early.
April 21st.
No, it's early than that.
April 14th, April 14th.
Keep going. February.
Sorry you missed it.
Yeah, it's, it may hold up Don's, you know, attempt to get the site cleaned up that we all want to have, but I think that it's important to follow our process. It's a matter of holding up a few more weeks.
Well, given the history on the site, we're kind of boxed into a corner on this one, so.
Yeah.
I mean, we, like I said, we're all anxious to get this done, but
Right.
We got to cross our Ts and dot our Is.
Exactly.
Being the case, I'll ask for a motion to schedule a public hearing on the Putnam Stone Erosion Control Plan Application for our April meeting.
I make that motion, and I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. If you see Vera, she'll tell you what you got to do.
Dennis, did you have a question?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
I guess it's a kind of a comment and kind of a question that any further submissions that come to the board for review and to our consultants for review would anticipate rock crushing, so that any approvals that we could render would include an approval for rock crushing. If you don't need it, then we won't need it, but we'll have the approval on board to carry on with it if it is decided.
Right, and if they choose not to exercise that right and just cart it off, that's fine, yeah.
Good.
And that'll be a business decision, right?
We're going to do the grinding first.
Yeah.
As I stated before.
Right.
And that's like three to four weeks.
Yeah, that's the mulch.
In duration.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, good.
We're good to go, and I'll see you again next month.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is the last item above the line this evening. Bruce or Julie, are you going to run us through the below-the-line items?
I also want to welcome Julie back, because as the board is keenly aware, she does a much better job at this than I ever do. Anyhow, going for the below-the-line items, Bashrat Man. Mr. Bashrat came into the planning board office and also at the workshop, indicated that he would be pursuing an actual subdivision rather than a lotline adjustment. We're waiting to get documents in regards to that submitted to the board, so that can start to be reviewed. The Center for Physical Therapy, we don't have any new information subsequent to the last meeting before the board. Lakari Limatoni, Bill Walters and I were out there today. Soil samples have been taken. It'll take about three to five days to get the soil samples back. The board recalls there was a mix of soil that was deposited on site, and the intent was to have that soil tested, as there was some debris and also some prior history of some soil from the Westchester Medical Center. So, that has been tested. It's got a chain of custody from that site, which will be going to a certified laboratory, and as I said, we anticipate the results in about three to five days, and hopefully that can move along with the completion of the erosion sediment control review. Mr. Omara, I don't believe I have anything new. That's Vera waiting for the bond to come in? Okay. The Benny property, there's been discussion. I believe where it was last left was that Mr. Rhodey had contacted the engineering representative of Mr. Benny. The email indicated there'd been a conversation, and Mr. Rhodey was memorializing that conversation in terms of what would be required by the applicant to submit, so that this could be reviewed by the board. To my knowledge, those materials have not been submitted to the board as of yet. Hilltop Estates, there has not been really anything recent or new on that. The Timber Harvest Project, we're waiting for them to apply for a wetland permit. I spoke with their forester last week, and they're in the process of developing that information to submit to the board. Gold Fine Rin, the Scalafani property, nothing new on Gold Fine Rin, excuse me. The Scalafani property, the board will recall there was a mock-up of a, there it is. And I'm not, I don't speak fluent signs, but I think that what the board was looking for was something that is located on the end of the canopy, so people driving in and out can see that it's full service only, correct?
Right, and there's no representative here tonight. Has anyone been in communication with them regarding this?
No, and actually, we kind of moved past it, you know, this question at the workshop, but I am inclined, with the board's permission, to reach out directly to Rob and let him know that the mock-up that he gave us is not what we're looking for, and provide him some greater direction. So, I'll take that on.
Right, I think in our discussions on this issue, we were pretty clear that we wanted a prominent sign displayed high and open and
Yeah, yeah, and that's not it.
I, you know, I was staring at this picture, and I just couldn't see. Okay, you'll take care of that, Neil?
I'll take care of that.
Maybe a man with a sandwich bowl.
Okay, and on the flip side, the other page, we have Lima on Route 52 Corp., the Bybin Property, and also Shulkoff Kravitz. No new information on any of those projects.
Well, you're just whipping my turkeys. Well done. Thank you, Bruce.
This is where he gets the big bucks.
I think that covers all the items on the agenda before the board tonight. Not being the case, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.